Okay, Mary, it's your life.
Okay, thanks, Colleen. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Perth East Council this 22nd day of March of 2022. I'd like to call our meeting to order. If everyone could please bow their head for a moment of reflection. Thank you. We do have one addition to the agenda. Let Eric tell us what that is.
Yes, it's by law 162022, being a by law to appoint a treasurer, manager of finance and repeal by law number 542007.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have anything they wish to add? If not, we have a motion that the following items be added to the meeting agenda, item number 11.1.6 by law 16-2022, being by law to appoint a treasurer, manager of finance and repel by law 542007, and that the agenda as prepared for the March 22nd, 2022, meeting of council of the township of Perth East be approved as amended. I need a mover and a seconder moved by Jeremy, second by Andrew. All in favor? Carrie. Okay, if you have a queue near interest, you can disclose that now or as the meeting goes along. We have 17 items under the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like hold or have questions on? Hugh? Hugh, do you have a question?
Sorry. Yeah, 5.15 on page 33 there, they talk about, it's the perk on when they're talking about an access to road 131 to the east. And there should, I'm just not quite sure how that happens. Because there is a farm, not unless they're talking about, is it line 61?
Okay, do we have, Melissa, are you with us?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Sorry, Deputy Mayor, could you please repeat the question?
On the perk on, it's on page 33 of our agenda. It says there's an access to road 131 to the east. Are we talking about the township road? Because there's like a farm between it and 131. So I was just wondering about what access they would have to the east.
Um, I do not have that plan of subdivision in front of me, but I can forward it to, forward it to you after the meeting. I don't know if that's, that'll suffice for, for the purposes of this meeting. But there's a, there's an access to the north and then through the site. And almost like a, like an L shaped roadway proposed. And it'll, it'll terminate at road 131, I believe.
Okay. Look on the map here on page 34, it shows the access to road 131. And to 60.
Yeah, so it's a, yeah, it's an L shaped internal roadway. And then there's one cul-de-sac to the north, at the northwest corner, basically. But that's the shape of this, of the subdivision. And then larger lots are lined up along this internal road, which will be a public roadway.
Yep. No, no, I, I understand that. It's just that between this development and road 131, there's a farm. So I'm just not understanding how they're getting from their development over to 131. Because they really have no access, like their property does not go to 131.
I believe they.
That's why.
Do they not own that farm? I believe they bought, oh, Wes can, Wes can help. Okay, Wes?
They own right out to 131 here. They own that whole section.
Oh, yes, right. Sorry. Okay, no, that's fine.
They actually own right, right to line 59 from line 61 to line 59, they own that whole section.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and only the northerly, northerly half of the lot is being developed, is being turned into this industrial subdivision. The remainder for now will be a farm.
Okay, no, that's fine. That's okay. Thank you.
Anyone else with questions, Andrew?
Yeah, I see something on here and it's appropriate that maybe we could 5.1.10, MPP had a piece of his efforts to improve fire safety in the area. It's been all ongoing kind of struggle, especially with COVID. I think he's gaining some ground, but I don't know if we could send a letter of appreciation. I know it's his job, but he's gone over and above to try and help all firefighters in Ontario kind of be more safe with the, the trust designation and some of the other work he's doing. You know, Mayor, I guess it's appropriate, we can, we can't really support this, it's already in motion, but can we send a letter of thanks for maybe from, from the council, if everybody wants to do that, just for his efforts in firefighter safety?
I think we can do that. So we'll pull that one out and treat it separately.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other one anyone would like to hold or questions? If not, then we have a motion that items 5.1.1 to 5.1.17 is set out in a consent agenda for March 22nd. Regular be received for information with the section of 5.1.10, which shall be introduced separately in the minutes of March 8, 2022, regular council meeting be adopted. We have a mover and a seconder for that moved by Jerry. Second by Darryl. All in favor? Carried. Okay, so then we'll have a separate motion for the one that Andrew wishes to have. So a letter of thanks. So do you want to move that, Andrew? And do we have a seconder? Darryl? Any more questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, we do have one delegation tonight. We have David Clark with us. He's the county emergency management coordinator for the county of Perth. And we welcome you, David, and the floor is all yours.
Thank you very much, Mary, and through you to council, thank you very much for taking the time and allowing me to present the evening. I'm just going to overview, it's, it's hard to believe come up in May, I'll be, have been in the county for a year. And it seems that time flies. So I'm just going to cover off some of the things we were able to accomplish together this year and take into account some old learnings we had and where we're going to go over the next three years and, and sort of walk you through that. So if I'm able to share my screen. How is that? Is that coming up for everybody?
Yes, it is.
Awesome. All right, so we'll jump right into this. So when I arrived in the county, obviously dealing with all the lower tier municipalities and Perth East, I was able to have the emergency control groups and the emergency management program committees walk me through sort of their processes throughout the county. And there was a number of things that were apparent. One, that the staff were very engaged and they had, you know, an enthusiasm about emergency management and wanting to do a good job to serve the public. And we wanted to capture that. And we, when I looked at each one of the municipalities alone, they would get through, but they would need additional help. And, and as a result, looking at the program holistically, we're stronger together and being able to draw from our neighbors in the other municipalities and at the county level. That's what we're sort of going to try and build upon and build us a strong base across the entire county and the lower tiers. Capture that energy from our folks and their skill sets that they bring to the table. And then build a incident management team across the county that is specific to Perth East, West, North and South in the county. And then also the town of Stratford's, or sorry, city of Stratford's expressed interest and also the town of St. Mary's in, in working together as a collective. So over the next three to five years, what we want to do is, because not everybody does emergency management on a daily basis, and some people may find it intimidating or worried about their performance. That's not what we want to have. We want to capture people's capabilities, build their confidence. And then the competence will come with that. So that's our goal for the next three to five years. So there's a number of things that also are encased in the program throughout the county and the lower tiers. And we got a buy in 2020 due to COVID as far as doing our emergency exercises and a number of the items associated with the regulatory compliance under the Emergency Management Civil Protection Act. But in late August, the province came back and said, you must do these exercises. You must accomplish this to be compliant this year. And so we were able to actually go through and meet that, and we'll talk about that a bit later. But we're able to meet and exceed all the regulatory compliance for Perth East and also throughout the county in relation to training and exercises, our plans, reviews, our HIRA review, emergency management program committee meetings, public education, you know, in the time of COVID is, is, was a little harder, but we were able to send out the right messages through the websites and through some great help within the emergency management program committee as well. And also look at the qualifications. This year, Becky Westman stepped up as our alternate CMC in Perth East and is doing a fantastic job. And we were able to get her on some training courses and qualified in the position of CMC. So kudos to Becky. We also, under the emergency management portfolio, were responsible for being the lead in relation to help with the Huron Perth Public Health and the vaccination clinics, both the mass vaccination clinics in Stratford and also over in Huron County, but also within the satellite communities. And again, I got to give kudos to Becky and her staff and the ECG group in Perth East. Because they did a fantastic job in hosting clinics there at the perk and also in some other satellite locations. So at the time when I wrote the report, that was in the beginning of January, we had over 154 mass vaccination clinics. And this is just in Perk County alone, at that particular point in time, over 101,000, probably closer to 102,000 vaccinations given out within the county. And that's amazing in the fact that we're able to step up and keep our friends and community safe. Giving the fact that we were able to get that medication out to them. We also looked after volunteer coordinators at the mass vaccination clinics. And as the emergency management coordinator, I've sat on three committees with Huron Perth Public Health. We also had an opportunity to engage with the University of Toronto Critical Infrastructure Engineering Program, where we had the cream of the crop, fourth year students come in and, and they were challenged with a scenario. And we looked at two different scenarios for the county and one was the use of anhydrous ammonia, both in recreation facilities. And if you may recall, we was about five years ago now in Ferney, British Columbia, they had a tragic incident at one of their arenas where three fatalities occurred with the mismanagement and handling of a chiller unit containing anhydrous ammonia. So looking at that and also the use in agriculture and the food industry, and they came back with some recommendations. Some of them that are adoptable in, in a rural community and some that are not. But again, it offers a fresh lens to look at some of the problems. And they also did the same thing for courthouse security at the county courthouse. We looked at our emergency response plans as a group and a collective throughout the county and felt that there was a need to update the plans. And we're going through that process this year. Looking at our hazard identification risk assessment and the impacts of climate change on how we identify those hazards. And we just have to look out to British Columbia with the flooding this past year and also out east, similar things. And the increase in severe weather events, whether it's winter storms or tornadoic events and high wind events as well. So looking at those and using data to drive how we better prepare ourselves for those. And when we redesign our plans and look at our plans, we want to ensure that they're easy to use. We don't need to be lugging around three inch binders from place to place. We want it to be, be portable on our phones, tablets, computers. It's always good to have a hard copy, but that's one of the things we're looking at and the interoperability of those plans. Can we use the same plan throughout the county with detailed annexes pertaining to each one of the communities for their critical infrastructure, their contact lists and things that may be unique to that particular community as part of our plan. And then also incorporate the use of technology. And I think we're seeing this, this evening, Mayor and council that we can't have in-person meetings. In the case of a major event, maybe it's not safe to send our folks from their house to the EOC. Maybe we can do it virtually and we have pivoted to do that. And I think that's one of the things we're going to see going forward is to capture that use of technology to help us better manage events and keep our folks safe at the same time. Now, we did, as I said, do the, the exercise and this year conducted six exercises, one for each one of the communities throughout and the county itself. We took a tornado incident and the goal of the exercise was not so much to manage the tornado and the results of that, but to look at a couple of things we do to get there. And that is, you know, how do we assess major events? And size them up for resources and the severity of the event? How are we using our plans to help us solve and manage the events? How is the notification process and our EOC stand-up process? How are those things coming together under the current versions and future versions of our plans? And some of the results we saw out of that was one, I've mentioned it already, excellent collaboration between internal and external stakeholders. We had, I believe it was over 100 people participating in these exercises this year. And we got really good feedback from the folks on the exercises. And what I noticed is there was already some outstanding pre-existing stakeholder relationships that have been forged prior to my arrival here. And then there was new ones that were made as well. As with all the things we do good, we can always be better. And so we looked at some of the areas that were, came out of the exercise, such as the plan structure, the content, accessibility through technology, updating our contact lists, how we activate. Is there a workflow or a framework that we can follow? And those are things that we carry forward. We do, we call an after action report and improvement plan and assign those things to different individuals to carry forward and make sure that those things are captured. And if there's an action item that we can use to make things better, and I've already covered a couple of them, that that gets done, it just doesn't, we just don't leave the exercise moving forward. So it's a continual cycle of, of getting better. So how do we get there in the future? How do we make our plans better? How do we capture those things? Well, we look at the data, the data from our exercises, the data from our folks in relation to response and critical infrastructure. And also input and expertise from all those internal and external stakeholders within the municipality and across the county as a whole. And then we took that information. We were looking at our emergency response plan and our HIRA, our hazard identification risk assessment. And that higher currently, we're receiving a report back from the University of Toronto on, I believe, the 8th of April in relation to what they found using data right now to predict how things are going to happen. It's rather subjective and opinion based, the particular format that is utilized standard in the industry and across the province. So we wanted to look at the climate change data, see how that can help us possibly be better prepared. So for example, if you have a flooding event that's happening on a regular basis and it's impacting some of your critical infrastructure, such as sewers and or bridges or roads. Is there something we can do knowing that that's likely to happen based on the solid data to protect that in the future? So excited to hear back from them, see what, what they have for us, so that we can share that. And then we also applied for, with all the lower tiers and the county and St. Mary's of Stratford, a modernization grant for, to look at the processes and workflows in relation to emergency management. So we will be putting out shortly requests for representation from each one of the LTM's and also Stratford-St. Mary's in the county to put together a team to pick a consultant. We'll be putting an RFP out and then those folks are going to look at how we can be better in emergency management, how we can use technology, how we can use the design of our EOCs to be better. And then in hand in hand with that, we also have to look at training for the people who are going to operate in the emergency operations center and get a consistency across. As I said, we're stronger together. If we can be interoperable through the entire county, all of the municipalities whereby we have somebody who's filling a particular position in the emergency operations center. I can tell you from past experience, the person who's best at it is usually on a beach somewhere or they're out sick when you really need them at that particular point in time. So if we can draw somebody else who's equally qualified and credentialed and had the same training from another location, it, it makes it better for us and it fulfills our response capabilities. So we picked a provider, a Canadian training provider, Emergency Solutions International out of New Brunswick. They are credited with ICS Canada, which is the use of command system Canada, which is recognized by the province of Ontario. And what it allows for is a consistent framework for us to follow and a workflow to follow to help us solve any of the major events. And we're looking at things that go beyond a one day cycle for the emergency services, something that is going to go for a week, a month, six months, sometimes even a year. And we're looking at not only the initial response phase, but more focused on the recovery phase and getting things back to normal for the community. And we'll see that as it comes up with the, as the pandemic, as we transition slowly towards an endemic phase, that, you know, recovering the community and getting things back to normal. It's the same thing after any major disaster. In order to set this in motion, I designed a three-year training and exercise program that covers off not only our annual compliance items, but also the training items. So this year, we're focusing on the incident command system 100 level. A number of individuals throughout the county have been given that. I know Becky has completed it as well. And then we're going to look through the emergency management program committee to have members of the emergency operations center take that as well and build that same base across the entire county. Then we'll also be running a crisis communications course this year for our communications officers and possibly the CAOs. And then an introduction to emergency operations center management, where we'll actually build out an ELC form and function and, and how to operate one and have that guidance given to us by these folks. And then as the election comes up, after the elections are over, to best serve council as well, we'll be offering incident command system for elected officials where it gives them an inside look as to what is expected from an elected official in a major emergency. Who is, what their responsibilities are standing in front of the camera and, you know, giving press briefings, et cetera. So it's laid out for the year and you can see in 2023, we continue to build on that and 2024 as well. And it's not all jammed into the last quarter of every year and trying to get things done. So the hope is, is that by spreading it out and having it planned out in an academic fashion, that people will be able to fit that into their schedules. And we can slowly build upon what we already have and make it better. So that's essentially going to take us to 2024. It's a continual, it's, it's a it's a living process whereby every year, things could change slightly, we could add things in, we could take things away as the cycle goes through. So having said that, Mary, I guess that's the end of the presentation and I'm happy to take any questions through yourself from council.
Okay, thanks, David. Any questions from members of council? Amanda?
Hi, David, thanks for the presentation. Just wanted to know, like, the crisis communications, like, training, will that be also open to council? Or just the other one that you were referencing?
Um, through the mayor, I'm, I'm happy to entertain that. I think the emergency management program committee would be the major one for that, but components of that crisis communication course will be addressed in that ICS 402 course for the elected officials. And that'll be the focus of it in your responsibilities, because council and the mayors, deputy mayors, the wardens, deputy warden, those folks oftentimes are the forward facing trusted face to the public and they will be charged with delivering scripted concise information to the public in, in that time of need. Oftentimes, the, the fire chief and the police chief, et cetera, they're, they're busy doing their thing. But in hand in hand coordination with your communications officer there. But having said that, if I have any volunteers who want to step up and take that course and do that, I am happy to take that on.
No, that's great. I, it's something of interest to me, just given my, what I do for my day job. But if it's even captured in that other course you're mentioning, it's something I am interested in. So thanks for informing council of those opportunities and the work that's underway. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else with questions? See no questions. Thank you very much, David, for coming tonight and giving your presentation. We really appreciate it. We look forward to working with you some more.
You very much, Mary. And, and I just have to say that, you know, the group in Perth East, the emergency management program committee and the emergency control group, been a pleasure to work with. You know, I've given kudos out to a couple of people, Chief Hunter and I are in contact on a regular basis. And, you know, Teresa, as the CEO and yourself as the, the mayor, it's, it's a pleasure to work with you guys and, and hopefully we can move this forward next year and take it to the next level. So thank you very much.
Great, thanks, David. It's great working with you as well. So you're welcome to stay. If you want to leave, we understand that and we hope you have a great night.
I think I have to get dinner ready for Mrs. Clark, who's also working. Thank you very much, folks.
Okay, thanks, David. Okay, moving on in our agenda to public meetings and hearings, we have no public meetings or public hearings tonight. We move to developments. First, item under development is modification of draft plan of subdivision. And Adam, the floor is yours.
Thank you, your worship members of council. Good evening. And I'm going to share a screen and walk council through very briefly this, this proposal. Okay, can everybody see the draft plan up in front of them?
Yes, we can.
So this, this was a draft plan that was approved back in 1993, back when the Ministry of Municipal Affairs was the approval authority. So this development predates the county official plan and it predates the township of Perth East back when it was Village of Noverton. And just by way of orientation here, so right now, this is a farm field and the Noverton Millwright's industrial facility is, is here on the corner. And this is the former rail bed. And what this subdivision would do is basically continue James Street West and would terminate here at the edge of the settlement boundary. And we would have a new cul-de-sac here and we would have a new, right now it's called Smith Street. And that would extend north from Mill Street. So we'd be looking at three new streets. And I'm just going to show council briefly a breakdown of this previously approved development. So everything here in yellow are semi-detached units, which is a total of 20, so two per lot. Everything here on the north and south side of James would be single detached. And everything in this cul-de-sac here would be, these would be apartment or higher density. And right now, the idea is triplexes or like three level apartments on each block for a total of 15 dwelling units total. The Millwright property and three other lots would be for highway commercial and block 27 here was approved for the stormwater management facility adjacent to the rail line. So just to go back in time a little bit, the ministry approved this and did not put a, a lap state on draft approval. And as well, the conditions from 1993 were pretty sparse compared to today's standards. They really didn't include any studies or other types of technical investigations. And if we fast forward a little bit, in 2017, Perth East Council. Put a, what I'll call a sunset clause on this draft approval. And in 2017, a resolution was passed and County Council approved a modification to the original draft conditions. That said, if we don't have registration of this subdivision by June 15th, 2022, draft approval will lapse. So back before Christmas, the agent for the developer Caroline Baker approached the county planning department and indicated that. The owner has a new developer on board who is very motivated to get this development off the ground. And that they would need to extend the lap state from June of this year to June 2025. So that's a three year lap state. And because the conditions of draft approval from 93 were really don't align with today's development standards. One of the things that we discussed was if we're going to extend the lap state, we would like to update these conditions. And in this case, by update, we pretty much prepared a fresh set of conditions that align with today's provincial policies and with the county official plan. So just briefly, it's, the new set of conditions is in the report package. But in my report, I just, I created a table that very briefly summarizes some of the new requirements for studies. And again, I'll just really quickly go through these for council's benefit. In terms of studies, one of the conditions here, the new condition number four, really just adds more detail. In terms of what the subdivision agreement should include. The previous condition from 93 just said that the township has to enter into a subdivision agreement. It didn't give any detail as to what that agreement should contain. So these conditions, I've worked extensively with BM Ross to develop new wording and new conditions that are basically modernized to reflect today's standards. I should note though that the draft plan from 93 is not changing in any way. The lot fabric, the street layouts are all remaining the same. This is literally just introducing modern draft plan conditions. One new one here is an archaeological assessment. And again, this would be required today for a new plan of subdivision. And some of the new studies that were requested or studies and technical reports requested. Were a functional servicing study, geotechnical investigation and subdivision design drawings. The original draft plan did have a, I'll call it a combination stormwater slash grading and drainage plan. That also had some utility details on water and sewer. But those are obviously outdated and they should be updated to reflect the 2003 provincial standards for grading and drainage. There's a few conditions here that just talk about entrances for the farm to the north. And the developer will have to accommodate that remains to be seen, but it'll be part of approval. As well as the driveway into the Millwright business. And the final addition here is a traffic statement. And this wasn't required back in 93, but a traffic statement is not a full blown traffic impact study. It's a very, very scoped statement by an engineer that basically is going to look at any potential impacts on Mill Street intersection. Resulting from those highway commercial lots. So there may or may not even be impacts, but we just have a level of comfort if we have that study. Saying that we don't have to do any road improvements. And I think. That's, that's basically the, the short of it. And so these conditions were also, we, we did work with Caroline Baker on preparing these conditions and Caroline has reviewed them. So the, the conditions before council this evening have been prepared collaboratively. And I believe everybody is on board and we, the developer would like to get going. Next steps, if council decides to endorse the new conditions tonight, we will then take these to County Council for approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have. And I believe Mr. Robinson from Reed Heritage Homes is also online if there are any questions for him. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Adam. Do we have any questions from members of council? Jeremy?
Yeah, thanks for that presentation, Adam. So you referred to it as the fabric of that subdivision. But the subdivision itself, if you were to design that today, would, would there be many changes to how those lots are actually subdivided? Or, you know, we're not proposing any changes, we're extending, extending that period for them. So, you know, would there be many changes that you would recommend if this came to us brand new today? Or is that pretty much how it is now?
Through your worship, that's a, that's an excellent question and that is something that we looked at at the staff level. And for a 1993 plan of subdivision, in the planning department's opinion, it was actually fairly forward looking in that it includes a range of different residential densities. So we are going to get some higher density in there as well as singles and semis. And then we have mixed uses with the commercial lots to the south. Based on the size of the property, it is fairly constrained because it's not a, it's not a large lot. And I think that it's a good plan. I think it provides for a mix of uses and densities as well as it ties into the existing infrastructure nicely with Mill Street and the subdivision to the, to the northeast.
Thanks, Adam. That's, you answered the question. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else with questions? Seeing no questions, we do have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East receive the report prepared by the. Prepared the planning entitled modification of draft plan of subdivision 31T-92001. Lap state extension affecting lands described as plan 363, part of lot 416 RP 44R 2796. Part one, Millerton Ward, 54 Mill Street, West Millerton, dated March 22nd, 2022. For information, and that council recommended the county of Perth approved the requested modification of a draft plan of subdivision by granting a three year extension. Of the draft plan approval from the June 15, 2022 to June 15, 2025. And to include other additional and updated conditions as contained in Schedule C of this report. We have a mover and a seconder for that moved by. Hugh, second by Jerry. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, thanks, Adam. And we're going to move on to zoning by law amendment for Michael Wilhelm Excavating. Melissa, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Does everyone see this?
Yes, we can.
So it's, we're going to be presenting a rezoning application for Michael Wilhelm Excavating located at 4365, line 36. So this proposal, the, what you see on your screen, essentially the, that outline in red, that's the extent of the rezoning. The applicant is proposing, that is currently zoned mineral aggregate resource. And they're proposing to rezone it to agricultural in order to accommodate a residence. And there will be, residents will be exactly within that red rectangle and in place of the barn. So to support this application, the applicant has submitted two studies. One is the aggregate impact assessment and the other one is the archaeological assessment. Aggregate impact assessment concluded that there will be no negative impacts to the current, to the existing aggregate operation. And the archaeological assessment, which you see on the screen, the, the farthermost outline, which is the green outline, it's hard to see. But that is the area that is to be protected during any ground disturbance and any construction work. That assessment came through as a result of previous, previous resource work. And was just expanded to, to include this, the recent, most recent construction work. So this slide, as you can see, like in the, in the center, that's essentially the, the extent of this rezoning. And on the right hand side, you see the accompanying official plan amendment. So this development in conclusion, this development will not have, will have an negligible impact on the overall viability and extraction capabilities of the site. As the area to be rezoned is already used for agriculture and not part, not a part of the extraction area. And a new dwelling will be erected in a place of the barn. We are recommending a, a hold be put on the land to ensure that any future development activity is properly monitored. And that archaeological findings and heritage attributes are protected in consistency with a PPS. And for the preservation of our, of, of cultural heritage. That concludes my presentation. Thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thanks, Melissa. Are there any questions from members of council? Seeing no questions, we do have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East receive a report dated March 22nd, 2022. Prepared by the planner entitled zoning by law amendment number D14-Z11-2020-PE submitted by Michael Willem. Wilham Excavating Limited affecting land to describe as part lot 10 concession to Ellis Ward, 4365, line 36 for information. And that council approves zoning by law amendment Z11-2020-PE submitted by Michael Wilham Excavating Limited as follows. Number one, that the area shown is stripping on the attached map and described as part lot 10 concession to Ellis Ward. In the township of Perth East shall be removed from the mineral aggregate resources special zone 4MAR-4 of bylaw number 301999. And so be subject to the provisions of agricultural zone section six of bylaw number 30-1999. As herein after set forth, the zoning of this land shall be shown as A on the key map 44 of schedule A to bylaw number 301999 as amended. And number two, that the area shown in stripping on the attached map, schedule A shall be placed within the holding zone. H of bylaw number 30-1999 and so be subject to the provisions of section 26.3 of bylaw number 30-1999. As set forth in this bylaw, the zoning of this land shall be shown as A-H8 on key map 44 of schedule A to bylaw number 301999 as amended. Number three, that section 26.3 of bylaw number 30-1999 is hereby further amended by adding section 26.3.8. A location part lot 10 concession to Ellis Ward, the township of Perth East. B prior to the removal of the site, H8 provisions as established by this bylaw, the owner of the land within the AH8 zone shall demonstrate that a licensed archaeologist. In the province of Ontario was present during any onsite excavation work for the construction of a single detached dwelling. Prior to the township of Perth East releasing a building permit for construction works beyond the foundation. A foundation permit is permitted to be issued by the township of Perth East prior to the lifting of the holding provision. All other provisions of bylaw number 30-1999 as amended shall apply. I need a mover and a seconder moved by. Andrew. Second by. Amanda. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, and our other item in planning is zoning by law amendment for Walter Lance, Sherry Lance, Rebecca Lance and Eric Schmidt. Rebecca or Melissa? I'm sorry, Melissa.
So this is the zoning amendment for 2158 Perth Line 43 zoning amendment 1021. What you see on the screen highlighted in yellow, yellow outline, that's the extent of the rezoning. And also the green outline to the north. The center portion is going to be rezoned to agricultural. And the northerly portion, the existing natural heritage area will be also be extended. So in order to formally recognize the rehabilitation of the land, the land in the center has already been rehabilitated. And is being used for agriculture and the license, license has been surrendered. The applicant is seeking to rezone the former aggregate operation. The proposed zoning aims to formally confirm the land uses pertaining to the rehabilitation of the lands. The news use will be consistent and compatible with the adjoining agricultural land use and will have roughly the same acreage. And soil capability as existed previously, save and accept the area to the north, which will be rezoned to the adjacent natural heritage, as I mentioned earlier. This was, there was such a public meeting, it was held on December 21st. And the official plan amendment in conjunction with this rezoning was approved by County Council in February 17, 17, 2022. This concludes my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Melissa. Are there any questions on this report? Seeing no questions, we have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East receive the report in March 22nd, 2022. Prepared by the planner entitled zoning by law amendment number D14-Z10-2021-PE submitted by Lance, Walter, Sherry and Rebecca and Schmidt, Eric. Affecting lands as described as part lot 18, lot 19 concession seven northeast oak 2158 Perth Line 43 for information. And that council approves zoning by law amendment Z10-2021 submitted by Lance, Walter, Sherry and Rebecca and Schmidt, Eric as follows. Number one, that the area shown and hatching on the attached map and described as part lot 18 lot 19 concession seven northeast oak board in the township of Perth East. Shall be removed from the mineral aggregate resources zone MAR of bylaw 30-1999. Shall be subject to the provisions of natural resource environment to zone NRE2 section 21 of bylaw number 30-1999. As herein after set forth, the zoning of this land shall be shown on NRE2. On key map 32 of schedule A to bylaw number 30-1999 as amended. And number two, that the area shown and stripping on the attached map and described as part slot 1819 concession seven northeast oak board. Of Perth East shall be removed from the mineral aggregate resources zone MAR of bylaw number 30-1999. And so be subject to the provisions of agricultural zone section six of bylaw number 30-1999. As herein after set forth, the zoning of this land shall be shown as A on key map 32 of schedule A to bylaw 301999 as amended. Wow, I need a mover and a seconder moved by. Moved by Jerry, second by Amanda. Is there any more comments or questions? All in favor? Oh, sorry, Daryl.
Just one question, question to the banner, the natural heritage component. Was there any concerns from the applicant on that?
Um, no, they're in full support of this extension of the natural heritage feature.
Okay.
Thank you. Hey, anyone else? If not, all in favor? Harry. Okay, thanks, Melissa. Anything else? Okay, we have nothing from the CIO. We move to the clerk now. We have the municipal election of 2022 lame duck period. Eric, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so this report is just to kind of take council over section 275 of the municipal act. Which is for restricted acts of council during lame duck periods. So just some background for section 275. There are four sort of things that if it's determined that a council is in their lame duck period or their restricted period. They are unable to do four key roles. The first one is they are unable to appoint or remove from office any officer of the municipality. They are unable to hire or dismiss an employee of the municipality. They are unable to dispose of any real estate or personal property of the municipality, which has a value exceeding $50,000 at the time of disposal. And they are unable to make any expenditures or occurring any other liability which exceeds $50,000. So if anyone on council is unaware, lame duck is occurs, there's a calculation that occurs twice during the municipal election period. So if anyone on council is unaware lame duck is occurs, there's a calculation that occurs twice during the municipal election period. And it's essentially where we cannot confirm or be positive that a majority of council is returning to council the following year. So since there are seven members on our Perth East council. If it is impossible for six members of the outgoing council to be reelected. Then our council would be affected by lame duck provisions. So the. The calculation is done twice throughout the election process. The first one is between August nineteenth twenty twenty two, which is nomination day. To October twenty fourth twenty twenty two, which is election day. So we do a calculation then just to determine whether it is physically possible for six or for sorry for all seven members to be returning. Or sorry, six members, I apologize. And then the second calculation is done after the election. And it just determines whether six or more members are returning to council as well. So my recommendation is that council delegate some of this authority under section two seventy five. To the C I O if we are, if we are going to be affected by lame duck provisions. And as you can see in the report. In two thousand and six, twenty ten, twenty fourteen and twenty eighteen, the C I O was delegated the authority to act in situations while council was in the lame duck period. And that's my report. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Eric. Anyone have questions for Eric? No, see no questions. We do have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East received the municipal election twenty twenty two. Lamed up council provisions report prepared by the acting municipal clerk dated March twenty second twenty twenty two for information. And that a determination whether the council of the township of Perth East is impacted by section two seventy five of the municipal act two thousand and one. Known as lame duck provision will be made by acting municipal clerk after August nineteen twenty twenty two. Which is nomination day to October twenty four twenty twenty two and from October twenty four twenty twenty two election day. To November fourteenth twenty twenty two end of term. And that in accordance to a section two seventy five, the council of the township of Perth East delegate. To the chief administrative officer authority over the following actions. A, the appointment or removal of from office any officer of the municipality. B, the hiring or dismissal of any employee of the municipality. C, the disposition of any real or personal property of the municipality which has a value exceeding fifty thousand dollars at the time of disposal. And D, making any expenditures or incurring any other liability which exceeds fifty thousand dollars. And that this delegation is conditional and effective upon the provisions of section two seventy five. Of the act coming into effect in the township of Perth East. And that the chief administrative officer provide a report to council on all action taken pursuant to this delegation. I need a mover and a seconder moved by. Amanda, second by Andrew. Any more questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, anything else Eric? Nope, okay.
Well, that's everything. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Eric. We'll move to finance and the first item in our finances is the annual council remuneration and expense report. Rhonda, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, the annual council remuneration report and it's required under the municipal act. And if you look at the table on page one seventy four, this outlines the twenty twenty one remuneration for Perth East council. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Okay, is there any questions on this report? Gary?
Yeah, just something quick on my personal conference expense. I'm looking back and I did look back in all of my submitted. Paid or stubbed or paid forms and I don't recall seeing any, any conferences that I attended in twenty twenty one. It's, I don't think it's going to stop this report from going through, but perhaps I can just get the treasurer, me and myself could clarify. Over the next couple of days.
You sure can. I just checked the link and we do have a link for that amount for you, but I don't have the details, so we can talk about that for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, anyone else with questions? No questions. Council of the township of Perth East received a report prepared by the treasurer dated March twenty second twenty twenty two. Entitled annual council remuneration and expense report for information. Moved by. Jeremy. Second by Hugh. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Eric. Okay, and the second item is the twenty twenty two final budget. Rhonda?
Okay, the attached report summarizes the Perth East twenty two budget as approved by the budget advisory committee. The resulting levy change is five point seven five percent before assessment growth and three point five two percent after assessment growth. The table on page one hundred and seventy seven illustrates levy change at a high level. And it's between external and municipal changes. The table is on page one seventy eight, they outline the general revenue and expenditures and the changes where they're in. And the total for twenty twenty two for expenditures and revenue sixteen million twenty three thousand nine hundred and eight. The table on page one seventy nine shows you the water and sewer tables and the, and the same explanation for those. Other than that, the budget advisory committee has reviewed the budget in detail. And approval of this budget will allow the managers to go ahead with their capital project plan for twenty twenty two. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Rhonda. Any questions for Rhonda? No questions. The council of the township of Perth East received a report dated March twenty second twenty twenty two. Entitled twenty twenty two final budget prepared by the treasurer for information. And that by law fourteen dash twenty twenty two, being a by law to adopt the final estimates of all sums required by the township. For the year twenty twenty two be given three readings. Moved by.
Just a question. No, is it possible to get a hard copy of the budget, please?
I can make a note of that, Council McDermott, and we'll do that. And if anybody else wishes, well, I can do that as well.
Okay, and I'll pick it up whenever it's done. You can just email me and I'll pick it up at the office.
I've made a note.
Okay. So do we have a mover for that motion? Moved by Jerry. Second by. Amanda. So any more comments or questions? All in favor? Jerry. Anything else Rhonda?
No, nothing else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to move to public works and we have the Shakespeare Water plus E A update and Jake, the floor is yours.
Thanks Mary. It's good evening, everyone. So this report here covers a bit of an update on the Shakespeare Water E A. And just to briefly refresh everybody's memory. There's obviously a arsenic issue there in Shakespeare that is mandated by the ministry to be resolved by a certain date. We had went through the process of looking into different technologies to treat the arsenic. And we kind of tentatively selected one. Those went out to tender and. We were a bit surprised by some of the pricing we saw come back to us. And all of our vendors basically explained to us that it's primarily due to the space restraints on that site. And the access of that site. And also the fact that there's not three phase power there. So with that information. We also looked at some alternatives and this is what brought us to the C A. And we've, we're exploring four different options right now. Where the treatment could actually be, be done separate from the existing site. We know that our existing site is not, it can never be expanded to a point where it could service the entire community. So within our study, we wanted to, to look at options that down the road have the capability. Of servicing the community. So that was one thing we looked at. So. With the getting underway, we sent out a notice and we heard back from a lot of residents from Shakespeare. And a lot of the same responses were, were given and a lot were opposed to. Expansion of the system to the entire community. That was basically the, the extent of the comments we got was, was either for or against expansion to the community and. What we kind of got out of that was, was. Residents are actually thinking that this is being pushed on them right away. And that's actually not the case. That's not part of this study. So we think that they've, they're kind of misunderstanding this study. So with that being said, we'd like to, to send out another notice. Or an information letter, just kind of outlining what the study is again. And, and just confirm to them that this, this is not being expanded to everybody right now. Nobody's being forced to hook up. We're just kind of looking out for the future. As now, if there ever was a time, it would be now to look at. Moving us to a site which down the road had the capability. Of, of servicing the community. So. Additionally. Just to provide you a bit of a technical update on what's going on there with the A. We've gone on to explore four alternative sites. One site in particular, which is adjacent to the community center. It has been identified as the preferred location. It has the capability. To, to have a well put on it in addition to storage, which would allow us to down the road. Expand the community and we would be able to have fire protection put in, in the community of Shakespeare. So beneficial in a few ways. So we're just asking for council's approval to, to issue this letter out to the residents of Shakespeare. And proceed with the A. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, have questions for Jake? Andrew?
Yes, sorry, I'm going to frog in my throat. I have a couple. I briefly had an opportunity to speak to, to. Yeah, public work supervisor the other day. A little busy lately, so I apologize for not getting forward these questions. So I, I think from my perspective on my, on my travels in the area. That the line in the original sheet that was sent out that says as part of the study's consideration will be given for potential for the water system. Eventually be expanded to the entire community. Now. Not an English major from university, but that's a, you know. Basically, if you, if you look at those words, it's. Consideration is understanding, potential is likely or probable, and eventually will be sooner or later. And that's the source on those, so. It, it looks like reading that, any, any, anyone would think. That the expansion is imminent. So is that, am I off on that Jake or?
Yeah, like imminent is certainly not the word I would use. Basically, we, we wanted to incorporate that verbiage in there that, you know, down the road, whatever site we're looking at has the capability. To, you know, service the community. And a lot of the comments we actually received. There were a lot of people that had wondered why we didn't put in. Infrastructure like the linear infrastructure in the roads that were done years ago. And they were wondering why we weren't looking ahead to the future. So this is kind of an opportunity for us to, to look ahead. And, and by no means is it meaning that everybody's going to have to hook up. But it at least gives us the ability to do that down the road if council so chooses.
Can I keep going, Adam? I'm out of here.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I really apologize. I got a few things here. I'm trying to juggle this. So. Just to be clear, on, on the October nineteenth meeting, I wrote down in my notes. B M Ross engineer, great presentation, very concise, very professional. And he was asked the question of does this, will this be studied? Will the costs of hooking up? For the well owners, it's, I don't have the quote in front of me, it's just my hand scribbled handwriting. Will they be studied and, and he says, yes, the cost will be, the cost will be studied and divided up between. All the, all the well owners and that was specifically well owners. For this, so factually, it, it may, it is not, I agree that it's not the major component. Of, of the A study, but it is in there. So if we had, if the township had, it's just a general question, if the township had all that information on costs. And probably vendors at that point, that would, would that be basically shovel ready for funding? That would be my question on that.
Like where we were before, we had not discussed an alternative site, right? So there was no. Need for an E A. So yes, at that point it was shovel ready. But. Just due to the expense of it and, and you know, the restrictions on ever putting anything in there down the road. We thought this was an opportunity for us to look at some alternatives. And on that note, at the same time, there came about some funding. Or some opportunity for funding which we've applied for. We're hoping to hear back anytime now. So at that point it was shovel ready, but we thought if there was ever a time, it would be, it would be now to explore alternatives.
Sorry, maybe, maybe, maybe I didn't say it correctly. I apologize. So as far as after the E A is completed. And, and the B M Ross engineer had said. That the costs of hooking up the entire town will be explored in the E A. And, and maybe that didn't happen. I haven't seen the A documents. Then that would seem to me to be fairly far along the line. On the shelf, ready to go, subject to funding. Would that be correct or am I way off on that?
Yep, and my understanding, Andrew, is that that wasn't going to be part of the, the E A. And that would be decided at a later date. This would simply just provide us with the alternatives. And then we can make a decision following. And obviously any decision would, would incorporate those calculations or decisions into them. But it's my understanding that that's not part of this E A. I can, I can confirm that with, with B M Ross if you'd like.
Well, yeah, I don't, councils don't need to see the details, but I, I specifically remember, I remember that, so that's why I'm mentioning it. The question was asked, is part of the A about, because we had, we had some great discussion on this, some good. Some good talks and that was a good way to get some information out. And, and that was confirmed by then, whether it made it into it or not. I'm guessing B M Ross did the E A. So I would say that if that amount of data is a result of the E A and I'm asking you for your opinion. You know, costs and associations and, and basically contractors would have been contacted. Other than updating the prices which are going up monthly, I'd say it'd be.
Well, that, that hasn't been done to this point, Counselor McAlpine. And obviously the V E A is still underway. We're, we're actually somewhat. In the early stages, maybe the middle point, if you will. So there's still a lot more to be done. I think that that could be potentially brought into the E A study if, if that was something that, that council wanted to do. There, there might be, that would have to be at the end of the, the process, obviously with us having to determine costs and so on. Because at that, at this point, we haven't got there with costs. That will be kind of the next steps of this process. We'll look at the alternatives, concepts and, and costs and so on.
Yeah, yeah, I hate to hammer on, I'm just, and I appreciate your comments. It makes sense. It's, it's, it was from the, the engineering group, they, they've stated that it's going to be part of the A. Right? So that's why I'm mentioning it. So I, I would say when we're looking at it, and I'm not critiquing or anything, I'm just saying when we're looking at. Report and I'm not sure how that fits in and, and if I get some explanation on why it says this is not the case. To hook up to municipal water, that if we're studying it, possibly getting costs, we don't know the answer to that yet. Then that would ultimately. Be hooking up to, to everybody hooking up to town water. So that's, that's the general consensus. Fortunately and unfortunately, we're dealing with a community who's gone through a large M P O class E A study. So everybody's well versed on the value of words and, and following up and going through information and. And that's just the reality. And and that's just the reality on the ground. So we still have quite a few people who haven't purged that from their their memory those two difficult years. So that's, that's why the details are coming out. I got a couple more here. Sorry if you put up with me. If anybody else wants to go, that's fine, too.
Anyone else have questions?
I didn't see it in the report, so I'm just gonna ask if I may. What did we, where are we hoping to get? From from extending the comment period? What what's the outcome we're hoping to get from extending the comment period?
I guess what we want firstly and foremost is for the the residents just to to be on the same page as we are. And and you know, because we're we're under the impression that they think this is, you know, totally imminent. And and we can understand some of their concerns with that, but that's not what this is about. So we want to just kind of reiterate what the goals of the EA actually are. And hopefully, we can get some some, maybe some different feedback from those residents on what their thoughts are about that.
So all the, all the, the rollout of the thing was pretty universal. It was in the paper and then. And then later a letter sent, and I I don't know if it ever made it on the township website. So everybody basically had the same access to the same, the same, the sheets and all that good stuff. That's pretty universal. So everybody's had the same. Yeah, I just, I just see many things, so I can see why people might be concerned. There's many things, I think, in Mr. Burns's. Presentation, the the word opportunity and expansion was used. A great presentation, very, 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 very good, used many, many times. So anybody watching that, either during or after, might have some concerns. You know, also a little history, and I don't think. I know who was at that meeting. I don't think Jake, you or Coordinator Collins was was on at that level at that yet. But at the the hall in Shakespeare, we looked at the wastewater study, which also spoke about. Twenty eighteen Shakespeare Water Wastewater Study, which also spoke about the possibility of expansion. So that was latched on pretty, pretty fiercely. So that's maybe for some of the. Attunities gone. I wonder if I could ask about the the funding. Is that, is that appropriate? Can I ask what the funding? I scoured the the internet and found that there's been a decision made on that. Since we're doing an update, is is that something we can share? Do you know any more than that, or do they not want to release it yet, or?
Yeah, Ron, I don't know if you've received any information on it, but as far as I'm aware, it hasn't officially been been released yet.
I believe we're at the stage of its nominated that I believe we're at the stage that we're nominated at the provincial level, and it's moving on to the federal level. So nothing's, nothing's firm, but it's looking good.
And what are, what are those numbers based on? Will they be based on expansion of the system or strictly the arsenic? I didn't see the funding request, so I don't, I don't understand what's in it. I'm just trying to ask, answer some of the questions that are being asked in the communities.
Yeah, I'd have to to look back now, this is going, using my memory. But as far as I recall, part of it was the betterment of of potable water. And and certainly, this is what we're doing here, i- is improving the quality of the water by by treating the arsenic. I spoke with. With Steve Burns from from BM Ross, and he had indicated. At the time, we we applied, it was, you know, for the actual existing site where we're gonna put the treatment in. But he had said that there there should be no issue with transferring that to, if we go to a different site per se, there should be no issue with the funding.
And I don't know, I don't have any experience with EA submissions, but since there is thirty two comments, and I'm not sure what proportion was unfavorable. It's, would that affect the EA submission and the and the funding?
EA and and the and the funding are are totally separate issues. I don't know how that would affect the EA. At the end of the day, the EA just presents us alternatives. It's it's not a decision one way or the other. So those will be on the record, and and those can be used in consideration when council makes a decision after.
Yeah, I thought I read something on the, on the IC, ICIP website about. Some some applications pending EA and community feedback or community something or other. So that's why I'm asking that question. Yeah, I'm just, so again, we're hoping to get. Different feedback or more feedback, or I'm just not clear on.
Not necessarily more feedback. If we do, great, but I think we just want to clarify again. What the goals of this study are, and that is just to to look at some different options while we have the chance. Because once we go and put this treatment in the in the existing site. It kind of shuts us off to the ability to to expand down the road due to the actual cost of it. Being put in that site, so that's kind of what we want to get across here with this, with this notice.
No, it makes sense. It's a wise move to do some building on it now. Yeah, so, so we had spoke about on October nineteenth about having staff report. To address some of the concerns, to put some things on paper. Some of the counselors were, and rightfully so, concerned about advocating for something. A list of suggestions were put in. How far are we along on that, or can we expect that anytime soon? Basically, kind of a well owner protection strategy. That we were gonna incorporate. Is 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 that on the on the books still, or where are we with that?
That's not something actively I've been working on right now. Just being that the, you know, that this isn't really the time we're discussing actually having other well owners connect. That's kind of a discussion for down the road. At that point, we can, we can certainly get into the details of that.
One other thing, and I'll be done. I'll, I'll put it in my comments when we vote on this too, but. So, so we had discussed, had a really good discussion. I don't know if you're college here on on on. With the counselors about about delaying. One of the reasons why we wanted to to go ahead and get the A started. Is we didn't want to delay it so we could have a chance of getting the funding and getting all this good stuff going. We're talking about, we had three counselors, really good questions. So now we're possibly gonna delay it up to three months from the original end date of the. Of like, was it February eleventh, I believe? So we're looking at the end of April now. So I'm not, I'm just trying to make the connection between that that discussion and and the direction we're going now.
Sorry, Andrew, which deadline is that you're referring to?
I think, I think the original, the original. Thing had a, from BM Ross, a handout, had a February eleventh deadline, if I'm.
Oh, for the, for, okay, for receiving comments, yeah.
Yeah, so now we're asking that comment period to be extended to. April thirtieth, so the 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 consensus was we didn't want to mess with the. The the comment period, because we want to make sure we get the same going. And effectively, this, and I'm sure this has been thought of, I'm just bringing it up because it kind of sticks in my mind. We're effectively extending this comment period, which we didn't want to extend as far, because we didn't want a staff report to hold it up. We're extending that to April thirtieth now, I believe. So I'm not, I'm just want to understand the disconnect on that.
So a- again, there's not really a correlation between the comment period and the funding. They're kind of separate issues. Now, we're gonna continue and proceed with the study. The EA study in investigating these these different sites. But at the same time, we're just welcoming more comments, giving residents more time to chime in with whatever feelings they have on it. And and you know, we can consider that in our decision at the end of the process.
Thank you.
Anyone else with questions, Darryl?
I know, great, great, great discussion here. It's very important. There is, there is concerns in the community and mandatory hookup being one of them. But of course, here, it's nice, we're seeing, we're clearing this out, that isn't the intent. And I hope that is stick, stick. And it's, it's interesting for sure. Because last thing we want to do is forcing people into something that a lot is even sane when you have to. No, just what would the hydro be right now and in arsenic? We talk of three phase, for example, I can tell you off the top of my head. What it takes to run a four thousand head fishing barn, a hydro for the water on single face. Well, alone because of natural currents with just augers and five hundred bucks covers that. So we're expecting huge draw, I'm suspecting, off of this arsenic system. I never would have expected that. It's just, yeah, I I believe there's room for about enough of hundred and thirty houses, isn't it, off that well existing? Now, I know it's a little tight there, they're saying. Just those are some of my comments. We we can say, you know, we want three phases, and three phases is important. But at the end of it, I'm very well versed with what use, what hydro, with livestock and well never shuts it off. So it's just, you know, the three phase thing, it's a concern, but I don't know if it's as big a concern as maybe. You know, really beyond here, I'm just concerned that it won't be that big a difference. Personally, I can see it trying that much power. No, very interesting. We'll see where it goes and we'll go from there. Thanks.
Hey, anyone else with questions? Hugh?
I just, so I'm totally clear. If you extend the the comment period, that will won't in any way, shape or form. Put anything behind, like everything's going on. As it's supposed to go on, and this won't interrupt everything that's supposed to be going on, right?
That's, that's right, yeah, yeah. The study will proceed. It's just giving residents a bit of an additional time to to comment.
Okay.
Hey, anyone else with questions? I guess for clarification, it is on page two hundred and forty seven. It does say there that. The goal was to find out about the arsenic. The other was just something we added to see what was happening. And there seems to be an awful lot of miscommunication in the public and in the community of what really council's goal was when we started this. So I think this letter that they're proposing will certainly help clarify the issues. So we have a motion that the Council of the Township of Perth East received a report entitled Shakespeare Water Class EA Updated. Dated March twenty second, twenty twenty two, prepared by the Manager of Public Works and Parks for information. And that confirmed by this resolution, the letter titled Class EA Project Update be received and accepted by council. And that the Council of the Township of Perth East authorized staff to issue the letter titled Class EA Project Update to all residents of Shakespeare. We have a mover and a seconder. Moved by Amanda. Second by Jerry. Any more comments or questions? Andrew?
Yeah, I appreciate the the sincere comments from staff and everything is looking at. Looking at all the information, it's it's fairly clear to me. And you know, there's, there's a huge amount. I'm not even gonna read through it. That this is gonna consider, it will have components that will lead to townwide water connection. So we're looking, and I'm not clear on the reason why we're recommenting. I have no opinion on on whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, but I'm just thinking that we had a process. The comment period is is complete. So did, you know, we're, we're changing the process optically. That may not be the best thing in this situation, so I I I won't be voting in favor of it, not, not because of any staff comments or anything that's been done. Just because it's clear to me at least, unrefutable, that this is gonna have components that will eventually lead. You probably, depending on funding, will eventually lead to a townwide water connection. And since we haven't put these, these. These measures in place that was requested on the October nineteenth meeting to to protect and to guide us through that. That I'm not comfortable doing anymore with the process. I agree with the process. We were doing the class EA and got it started. I deferred a resolution to try and support the people who are concerned, so I gave into that. Well, I I I think that, I I think that I'm not sure what we're looking for. So I can't vote on something that I don't know what we're voting for. What's the outcome we want? Everybody has had the, the comments, the same sheets have been distributed the same. And and really, the comment period's over now. I, that's fine if we want to do, get, you know, same comments over again, I guess, hopefully more. I'm guessing that thirty two number was probably quite a few people. I don't really know. That's a question I didn't ask. I'm not gonna ask it now when the motion's on the floor. But I just, I have some concerns about messing with the process at this point. So I I won't be voting in in favor of, and I'd like a recorded vote.
Anyone else with comments or questions? I guess my comment is, why are people confused? And I think we're trying to clarify the confusion, but anyway, Eric, please. Call members of council for a recorded vote.
Yes, so there was a recorded vote requested by Council McAlpine. So Council McAlpine, yeah, your name?
Nay.
Counselor Broadhagen?
Yay.
Counselor Hurlick?
Sorry there, I smashed my finger and it doesn't work great, and I can't feel the mouse. I apologize. Nay.
Counselor Smith?
Yay.
Counselor Matheson?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor McDermid?
Nay.
And Mayor Agins?
Yes.
So that motion has passed.
Okay, it's Eric. Motion is carried. Okay, now we're going to, thanks Jake for all your answers and. Move on. We have nothing from building. We moved to Recreation and Community Services. We have, the first item is the Amendment to Fees and Charges. Becky, the floor is yours.
Yeah, so this is just adding in the fee for the rental of the Perk Pavilion. Which is the same price as the Morningdale Park Pavilion to rent that as well. So it's just to add that, that fee in.
Okay, any questions for Becky? Jeremy?
Maybe I missed it in the report, but for what period of time is that rental for the ninety two dollars?
That's for for a day, however long they want it, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, anyone else? Seeing no questions at the Council of the Township of Perth East received a report prepared by the Recreation and Community Services Manager. Entitled Amendment to Fees and Charges dated March twenty second, twenty twenty two for information. Excuse me, and approval. And that approved the rental of the Perk Pavilion at ninety two dollars and thirty cents plus HST. And that three readings be given to by law fifteen dash twenty twenty two, being a bylaw to amend by law sixty dash twenty twenty one. Fees and charges by law Schedule D. We have a mover and a seconder moved by Andrew. Second by Amanda. Any more comments or questions? On favor? Carried. And the second one is the Hensel Co-op Strong Community Initiative Grant. Becky?
Yeah, so the Melbourne to Allwells Park Committee are starting to do their fundraising. This is a similar request that we've had in the past from organizations. For example, the Stratford Borough Community Foundations. Some organizations don't have the the charity status to be able to apply. In this case, the Allwells Park does not have that status. Um, in this case, the All Wheels Park does not have that status and they're just asking that, um, the township Perth East, um, uh, support this and, um, so the application would go under the township of Perth Perth East, um, but would be directed for the All Wheels Park.
Okay, any questions for Becky? Seeing no questions. We have a motion as the Council of the Township of Perth East received the Hensel Co-op Communities Initiative Grant Report prepared by the Recreation and Community Services Manager dated March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two for information. And that council approved the request for sponsorship for the application for the Hensel Co-op Communities Initiative Grant for the Melbourne All Wheels Park Committee. We have a mover and a seconder moved by Jerry. Second by Amanda. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Carried. Okay, anything else, Becky?
Oh, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have nothing from fire. We have no correspondence. And we have council reports. So I do have, um, some reports from, uh, County Council. We had a presentation this past, last Thursday on, um, emergency services. It's a paramedic service deployment review. And that they're trying to find efficiencies in our ambulance services and they're doing this with Elgin and Oxford County. And so we had a presentation by, um, the group that did the present, or the study and now the, uh, uh, head people will go back and, and make some recommendations, um, like, like Mike is our chief paramedic and he will, he and the other counties will coordinate together and see what, uh, they think we should move forward with. We're also putting a elevator in the courthouse for one point two million. Uh, we appointed N A Engineering. They're going to do the project supervision, construction oversight and a contract administration for this. We had tenders for bridge structures and both of them are in Perth East, one's in Millbank and one's in Poole. And N, N S Con Limited are going to, uh, do those renovations. Uh, we, we also had some renovations done at the EMS headquarters. Uh, it's the work area that when someone returns to work, they, they changed what the desk tapes and, and what they're doing. And under, uh, harm severances, uh, recall, we had Wayne Klooster have an application, uh, quite a while ago and that application has been finalized now. So does anyone else have any reports that they wish to bring forward? Daryl?
Oh, thanks here, Rhonda. I was going to bring up as well there, uh, the trends for between the paramedics there. I was going to come on, comment on that as well. You're expecting, I believe in the next two years it was Rhonda, was it? Or was it three, a sixty percent increase in paramedic in, in ambulance deployment with the aging population? I've talked of this repetitively since council, this council has started. I stay steadfast at these costs are going to come back to the municipalities. We're broke as a province. And I, I believe we need to keep in the back of our minds as counselors and the corporation and township above Perth East that this could get expensive. It, it's inevitable. There's, there's huge demand going to be rolling sixty percent increase and that's in the very near future. It's, everybody's getting old. So just thought I'd mention that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Daryl. Anyone else have any reports that they'd like to give? If not, we have a motion that we received the, the, uh, members of council. Uh, County Council report for Perth East Council Verba reports by members be received for information. We have a mover and a seconder moved by Jeremy. Second by Daryl. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, moving on to bylaws. We do have six bylaws that have a first, second, third and a final reading. Their bylaw number fourteen dash twenty twenty-two, it's to adopt the final estimates of all sums required by the municipality for the year twenty twenty-two. Bylaw fifteen twenty twenty-two, a bylaw to establish and require payment of various fees and charges for services provided by the municipality. Bylaw sixteen twenty-two, a bylaw to appoint treasurer, manager of finance and repel bylaw fifty-four dash two thousand and seven, bylaw one hundred and two twenty twenty-two to provide the amendment of the stock municipal drain twenty twenty-one Ellis Ward bylaw one oh seven twenty twenty-one and the collection of the amended assessments. Bylaw two eleven twenty twenty to amend bylaw thirty nineteen ninety-nine, that's forty-three sixty-five line thirty-six. And bylaw two ten twenty twenty-one to amend bylaw thirty nineteen nineteen ninety-nine and that's for twenty-one fifty-eight first line forty-three. These bylaws listed as above be read at first, second, third and final time. We have a mover for that. Moved by Hugh. Second by Amanda. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, we do have a need for a closed session, so with your informa, uh, permission, we will shuffle the agenda around and we will finish out the, the rest of the agenda. So those who need to leave or can leave, um, can do that. So under, we do have a notice of motion. Sorry, just give me a sec here. I gotta get mine. Okay, so we have a mo, a notice of motion that the Council of the Township of Perth East received the notice of motion from Counselor Daryl Hurlick dated March sixteen twenty twenty-two for information. And that Perth East has open conversation around council pay and why maybe using CPI as a continuous gauge year after year determine wages for council is not sufficient to to do many of the moving items that are taking place within Perth East, which include many residential developments, industrial park expansions, continues moving updates to many parks and rec areas that take much time for council to study and think out correctly. And that council realized that yes, we directed staff to use CPI as a metric in which to set council wage for this year and is a normal practice, but however due to the time council members are putting into council within Perth East due to the growth that wages for council twenty twenty-two be set with potential increase by open conversation. And that upon approval that council uses wage for the new council after fall of twenty-two, twenty twenty-two election. And that this notice of motion be considered at the April fifth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of council. So we'll have Daryl move that. That's his, it's his, uh, notice of motion. Do we have a seconder for Daryl's? Hugh? So everyone in favor of that, it'll come back to the next meeting. All in favor? Carried. Okay, under new business, we have the well, presentation that we had by David Clark, the Council of the Township of Perth East received the presentation from David Clark County Emergency Management Coordinator, Perth County Emergency Management Update twenty twenty-one achievements and twenty twenty-two program for information. We have a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Hugh. Second by Amanda. All in favor? Carried. Does anyone else have any new business? Any announcements? Okay, then we need a motion that we're going to go into closed session. So the regular meeting of council of the Township of Perth East be temporarily adjourned at to eight thirty-nine P M. To permit the holding of a meeting and closed session for the purpose of exceptions pursuant to section two thirty-nine of the Municipal Act two thousand and one. Personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees regarding a human resource matter. Moved by Jerry, second by Andrew. All in favor? Carried. Okay, thanks everyone else. Great night. Good to see you all. Jerry, you have a question?
No, sorry.
Okay, no.
My, uh, treasure fisher.
Oh, okay, good. Great to see everyone else. Have a good evening. We wish you all the best and we'll see you again at another meeting. So if everyone else could please on, log on to their closed session. Uh, we will move on with that. Okay, I think we will proceed. So we have a motion that the Council of the Township of Perth East recommend to the County Council Shannon Palmer as a Perth
Sorry, Mayor Aggett, sorry to interrupt you. We have to pass a motion to rise from close.
Oh, right. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, that the Council of the Township of Perth East rise from closed session and reconvene to regular session at eight fifty-six. Moved by Jeremy. Second by Daryl. All in favor? Eric. Sorry, I got ahead of myself. Okay. Now, we're going to pass the motion that the Council of the Township of Perth East recommend to the Perth County Council Shannon Palmer as a Perth East member of the Perth County Joint Accessibility Advisor Committee for the remainder of the term of council. Moved by Hugh. Second by Andrew. All in favor? Eric. Okay, and that the Council of the Township of Perth East appoints Michael Givens as Chief Administrative Officer for the Township of Perth East effective June sixth, twenty-two. And that three readings be given to bylaw seventeen dash twenty-two being a bylaw to appoint a chief administrative officer for the Township of Perth East. Moved by Jeremy. Second by Hugh. All in favor? Eric. Okay, then we have bylaw number eighteen dash twenty-two being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the Township of Perth East at its regular meeting held on March twenty-second, twenty-two. Be read a first, second, and third time. Moved by Jerry, second by Amanda. All in favor? Eric. Okay, and that the meeting of the council be adjourned at eight fifty-eight. Moved by Andrew, second by Amanda. All in favor?